Good morning. It's nine o'clock. I'm going to ask if we'll stand, and this morning we have guests Pastor Kyle Powderly to give us our invocation. Thank you, sir.
And I want to thank the commissioners for allowing me to come here this morning. I'm grateful to be here and grateful for your work. So let us, let us pray. Holy One, whose power is in justice and mercy and humility, we commend to your care our county. We thank you for such an extraordinary place in which we live. We ask you to teach us how to care for it and cherish it, its nature, its people, its potential to be a place where everything and everyone thrives. We thank you for leaders who answer the call to serve, to serve we, the people, and ask that you sustain them and grant them wisdom and empathy in their work. It's time today, speak your wisdom to and into our commissioners, empower them to lead us, to cast a vision of hope for our county, to make decisions for the well-being of all who live here, to model a way of being that shows the strength of kindness, the prosperity of ever widening circles of welcome, and bring down any of the barriers that threaten to divide us so that our county, our community, our common unity might grow. This we ask as one people in all our places and all our ways. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, first up is, we have the minutes of June the 10th, 2025, looking for motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And before I go into commissioners' reports and comments, I know Commissioner Harvey is in the building. I think he's up in one of the staff offices, and our county administrator is on a Zoom legal matter, taking care of some required arrangements on a legal matter. With that, we'll move right ahead with commissioners' reports and comments, and Commissioner Wagner, you want to go first?
Yeah, good morning. Just wanted to congratulate Hancock Volunteer Fire Company for dedication of their new tanker truck to the fire department, and I want to thank them for the way they served the community and the surrounding communities around Hancock. That's all I have this morning.
Okay, Mr. Klein?
Good morning, everybody. First, I do want to also congratulate Hancock on their new tanker and to acknowledge Debbie Cohill, as acknowledged by the Hancock Fire Company. She was instrumental, instrumental in writing the grant that funded most of that new tanker. So kudos and congratulations to Hancock and to Debbie Cohill's commitment to her community. And also, I've been down the Ag Expo and Fair several times. They do the pledge or the National Anthem at noon every day. The other evening was the pedal pool for kids. They had about forty kids participating. Nine of them did a full pool, which led to a non-person pull-off, and which was very entertaining watching. It was family night. So it was very, very fun times being down there. And last night, I stopped down for the baby parade, which has some good attendance. Our own Kelsey, our ag marketing specialist, has been entering her, her daughter in that for about three or four years now, and I believe they won again. And so again, lots going on down at the Ag Expo Fair this week. I would ask everybody to go down there, participate. The market fair is Thursday, and it's a great day to see how these young people have conducted their business by raising animals, livestock, and bringing them to sell. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Want to make a report? Okay. Again, good morning, everyone. It is good to be back. We've had a little bit of a summer break here. That's not to say that we haven't been extremely busy. There's a lot going on. For me, it's a busy time with Maryland Association of Counties, a number of different events and, and activities in leading up to the finale of the year, if you will, the, the summer convention, the second week of August. So a lot happening, a lot of meetings and visitations with, with senior staff with the state of Maryland and deputies, secretaries and deputy secretaries, planning for the next budget cycle. Also, I'd like to just mention our hearts and prayers, thoughts and prayers go out to the Spence family. Noel Spence, former judiciary, judiciary judge of, I guess, the Circuit Court here in Washington County.
He a delegate as well?
He was a delegate for a number of years back in the sixties, and quite, quite prominent in our community in both the legal fields and, and the judiciary and the state legislature. So I know that he was highly thought of in our community, and we respected the passing of Noel, just, I think, in the last two days or so. So our thoughts and prayers go out to the legal community. So I'm sure he had a lot of mutual respect and friends in the, in that department's. With that, we'll move right along commissioners' comments. I understand we do not have any staff comments here this morning, so with that, we'll move right into our first agenda item if they're not here, okay? We're, we are quickly running ahead. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion that we convene, we...
As a board of health.
We convene as a board of health for a matter.
Motion to convene board of health.
Second.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Earl.
I was always taught, be early.
There you go.
So there we go. Finally worked out. Anyway, thank you, commissioners and staff. Just here today to seek recommended approval of a contract for Medicaid transportation to AmVan, which basically is AAA. We've been working with them for many, many moons. It's for the contract period of July 1st of '25 through June 30th of 2026. It is the last option year to the original contract that we had signed with them. And 100% of the funds are basically pass-through funds that come down from federal Medicaid through the state to us.
Questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to go back into a board of county commissioners?
Motion to go back in.
Okay, motion is second. Reconvene as board of county commissioners. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, four oh. Thank you. You ready? Nope, still not ready? Okay. Can we do tab three, sole source? Okay. Next item is tab, under tab number three, sole source, source procurement award 1761 for Horizon Goodwill Industries Youth Shelter in Washington County, Maryland.
Good morning, commissioners. Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. The first recommendation I have for you this morning is the Sole Source Procurement Award, PUR 1761, for the Horizon Goodwill Industries Youth Shelter Initiative in Washington County. Motion to approve a sole source procurement to Horizon Goodwill Industries in the amount of $60,528 for enhancement to existing services offered for youth homelessness. This is contingent upon a final approval of the funding from the governor's office, and it, this was also approved by the local management board on March 21st, 2025. The purpose of the service to be provided is to fulfill the requirements contained in a community partnership agreement to be entered into, dated on or before July, on or after July 1st, 2025, between the Board of County Commissioners and the state of Maryland, acting through the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services, which in turn is acting through the Washington County Office of Grants Management. The contract is for a period of one year, commencing tentatively on July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. There's an option for the county to renew up to two consecutive one-year periods. It is the intent of the local management board supported by the contract with the governor's office to support the operations of the Goodwill Horizon Industries for the enhancements to the existing services. The Office of Grants Management wishes to apply Sections 1 through 106.2A and 1 of the Code of Public Local Laws of Washington County to this procurement. This section states that a sole source procurement is authorized and permissible when only one source exists that meets the county's requirements. This does require all four commissioners' approval today to move forward. The total funding allocated is $60,528, and this does not require any county funding.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, four oh. Thank you. Item under tab four is sole source procurement award 1760, Family Centered Support Services in Washington County, Maryland.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. The next recommendation is also a sole source procurement for PUR 1760, Family Centered Support Services in Washington County. Move to award a sole source procurement to the Washington County Department of Social Services in the amount of $91,464 for operating expenses of the family center operated by the Department of Social Services. This is contingent on the final approval and subsequent funding approved by the Maryland Governor's Office for children. This was also approved by the local management board on March 21st, 2025. The purpose of the service to be provided is to fulfill the requirements contained in a community partnership agreement to be entered into and dated on or about July 1st, 2025, between the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, and the state of Maryland, acting through a sub-cabinet, children's cabinet, interagency fund, which in return is acting through the Washington County Grant Management Office. The contract is for a period of one year, tentatively commencing July 1st, 2025, ending June 30th, 2026, with the option for the county to renew up to two consecutive one-year periods. Is the intent of the local management board, supported by the contract with the governor's office, to support the operations of the family center and to provide the support services which is operated by the Washington County Department of Social Services. The Office of Grant Management wishes to apply Sections 1 through 106.2A and 1 of the Code of Local Public Laws of Washington County for this procurement. The section states that sole source procurements are authorized and permissible when only one source exists to meet the requirements of the contract. This also requires all four commissioners' approval to move forward. The total funding allocated is $91,464, and this does not require any county funding.
Second.
A motion and second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, four oh. Thank you. Next item under tab five, sole source procurement award 1763, School-Based Mental Health Program in Washington County, Maryland.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Richard Lesch, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management.
The next one is a sole source procurement award, PUR 1763, School-Based Mental Health Program in Washington County. Move to award a sole source procurement to Brook Lane in the amount of $283,335 for the operating expenses for a school-based mental health program, which is contingent upon the contract approval and the subsequent funding awarded by the Maryland Governor's Office for children. This was also approved by the local management board on March 21st, 2025. The purpose of the service to be provided is to fulfill the requirements contained in the community partnership agreement to be entered into and dated on or about July 1st, 2025, between the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County and the state of Maryland, acting through a sub-cabinet, children's cabinet, interagency fund, which in return is acting through the Washington County Office of Grants Management. This is a contract that has a duration for a period of one year, commencing July 1st, 2025, ending June 30th, 2026. It is the intent of the local management board supported by the contract with the governor's office to support the operations of the school-based mental health program. The Office of Grant Management wishes to apply Sections 1 through 106.2A and 1 of the Code of Local Public Laws of Washington County to this procurement request. This section states that a sole source procurement is authorized and permissible when only source meets the requirements of the contract. This one also requires all four approvals from commissioners that are present today. The total funding allocated is $283,335. This does not require any county funding.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, four oh. Thank you. Moving along to, under tab six, intergovernmental cooperative purchase, 25-0197, Dell Computers.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Joshua L. CTO Information Systems.
The next recommendation I have for you this morning is the intergovernmental cooperative purchase, INTG-250197. Move to authorize by resolution the approval of the purchase for the replacement of outdated computers for several county departments from Dell Technologies out of Round Rock, Texas, at the contracted price totaling $141,677.72. This contract that we're utilizing was awarded by OMNI, the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, per contract 01143. Section 106.3 of the Code of Public Local Laws of Washington County grants authorization for the county to procure goods and services under contracts entered into by other government agencies, as long as we abide by the same terms and conditions of those contracts, and we are doing so. There is also a direct cost savings due through the economies of scale this contract has leveraged. Funding is available in the department's capital improvement budget for the purchase of these computers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, four oh. Thank you. Andrew, are we, okay, we ready for this one? Next item, under tab seven, is rejection of requests for proposal, purchase 1744, Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting, Building Demolition, Airport Operations Area, and Fence/Access Gate Realignment.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Andrew Oshman, Director of Public Works.
The last recommendation I have for you this morning is a request to reject a request for proposal, PUR 1744. Move to take action in the best interest of the county and to request that the bid for the aircraft, aircraft rescue and firefighting, building demolition, airport operations area, fence, access gate realignment project be rejected in accordance with Federal Aviation Administration regulations. When there are only one bidder on a project, the FAA requires a cost analysis of the bid in comparison to the engineer's opinion of probable costs. In this case, with only one bid being received, the engineer's opinion of probable cost being $1,489,350, and the bid coming in at $2,997,800, the bid cannot be considered reasonable and a favorable determination cannot be made. We're also requesting to revise and re-advertise the solicitation. The notice was posted on the state of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace, the county's website, and the new online bidding site, as well as the local newspaper. Twenty-nine companies did download the document, and we did only receive that one bid. So again, we're asking for permission to reject and re-advertise.
Motion to reject and re-advertise.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we ready for the transit? Under tab eight, bid award, PUR 1738, lease two new transit vehicles.
Good morning. Karen Bickner, buyer in the purchasing department.
Sean Harbaugh, Director of Transit.
The first recommendation we have today is bid award, PUR 1738, lease of two new transit vehicles. Move to award the bid for Option A to lease two new transit, latest production model gasoline engine transit vehicles for the jobs program from the responsible responsive bidder, Hagerstown Ford of Hagerstown, Maryland, with the lowest bid price of $39,216.32 per year for a total annual lease cost over a three-year period of $122,310.72, contingent upon approval of the final lease agreement by the county attorney's office. The department has leased vehicles for the Job Opportunity Bus Shuttle program since 2001, using funds provided by the Washington County Department of Social Services. The proposed lease for these vehicles includes warranty coverage for three-year, 36,000 miles bumper-to-bumper, and a powertrain five-year, 60,000-mile warranty. The lease will include a $1 buyout at the end of the lease term. The invitation to bid was advertised on the state of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website, the county's website, in the local newspaper, and on the county's new electronic bidding site. Bids were received on May 7th, 2025. Twenty-nine persons or companies registered or downloaded the bid document online, and three bids were received. Funds are budgeted in, in the department's operating budget for the first payment of the lease agreement.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we okay with the next item? Is everybody here? Under tab number nine, contract renewal, PUR 1620, Dumpster Services at Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment and Clean County.
Moved to renew the contract for the dumpster services at Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment Plant and Clean County to BFI Waste Services LLC, doing business as Republic Services of Hagerstown, Maryland, based on its letter dated June 20th, 2025, requesting a 5.2% increase for FY '26, based on the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics Consumer Price Index. The county accepted bids for the dumpster services at Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment Plant and Clean County on May 31st, 2023, and was awarded by the board on June 13th, 2023. The bid was advertised on the State of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website, and the county's website, and in the local newspaper. A total sum bid proposal was requested for the work, based on the unit pricing and estimated quantities set forth in the form of proposal. The county guarantees no minimum or maximum number of services. The required on-call services are for the removal and disposal of waste from the above referenced locations. Twelve persons or companies registered and downloaded the bid document online, and two bids were received. The contract period was for a one-year period which commenced August 1st, 2023, with an option by the county to renew for up to two additional consecutive one-year periods, subject to written notice given by the county at least 60 calendar days in advance of its expiration date. If the bidder wishes to renew the contract, he or she must submit a letter of intent to the county's Director of Purchasing at least 90 calendar days prior to the expiration of each contract year. The county reserves the right to accept or reject any request for renewal and any increase in cost for each specified location that the bidder may request. This will be the second and final of two optional one-year periods for renewal. Funds are budgeted in the department's operating budget for these services.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, 4-0. Thank you. Okay. Think we need a little WD-40 on that thing.
Yeah.
That could have been noisier. I didn't think of it.
WD-40.
I know, squeaky wheel.
Hey, we have a big announcement to make other than, Mr. Reifert, happy birthday.
Well, thank you, sir.
Number 39.
And is it true that on birthdays, county commissioners always grant a wish to their birthday?
You needed to apply seven days in advance. Okay, next, next on the agenda is, under Tab 1, the General George Washington Sculpture Project. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Commissioners, last year, you recall that you approved, hang on, I'm posing for Jeff here. You approved that this committee would move forward in honoring the namesake of this county, America's first Washington county. And you know that...
On order, we have a trespasser in the audience.
Mr. Porter. Mr. Porter, I'm going to nicely ask you to leave, please. You have a letter of no trespass for our meetings. One more time, Mr. Porter. Are you going to honor the no trespass letter? Hearing none. I have no other alternative than to take a recess and clear the room, unfortunately, until Mr. Porter leaves.
...presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Tom Reifert again for the record, and I'm just a member of the George Washington Sculpture Project. And I was mentioning that 250 years ago next year, this county was the very first Washington County named in the United States on September the 6th, 1776, as our county pins all say and our county logo up there. We have been working very hard and appreciate the efforts of the county commissioner to help be supportive of this project. It'll go kitty-corner across the street out in front of the courthouse, as I understand the resolution that was passed by the county commissioners for this project and where it will be placed. I'd like to introduce our committee chair, Al Martin.
Hey.
Thank you so much, Tom. I'll take a moment of privilege and introduce our other committee members with us here today. We have Steve Hummel, who is acting as our financial advisor, and Rachel Nichols, who is our wonderful grant writer, and our extremely talented local artist living right here in South County, Toby Mendez.
Here, here.
So, we're very pleased. And another person that couldn't be with us today is Paul Bannister, who is in court right now, in Orphans Court. He's one of the judges of the Orphans Court, and he is part of the Sons of the American Revolution. So, we're very pleased to have him as part of the committee. It's a similar group to what we had with the Clara Barton statue that was very successful. We're using a similar format, just to remind everybody to what we did then, of using the Washington County Community Foundation as our fiscal agent. That has enabled us to avoid the cost and expenses of incorporating, filing for nonprofit status, having to pay bookkeepers and accountants to keep track of everything. They're doing all of that for us at no charge as part of their mission to help facilitate this community project. We're very pleased today that we are with your assistance and several private donations we've received already in our quiet phase, that we've been able to get to this point of having a miniature maquette cast or sculpted in clay and then now cast in hydrocalso that we are able to publicly present the wonderful work that Toby has done. And with that, let me turn it over to Toby to tell us a little bit about the process and to go through the official unveiling here. You are seeing this publicly for the first time today.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Yeah, you see here today the two-foot scale maquette, which shows all of the detail that the final sculpture of General Washington would have. For my research, I actually worked with the model from Mount Vernon. He posed an official accurate attire for the sculpture and helped me with all of the details. So, the next phase will actually, with the county's funding, is we'll be able to go to seven-foot scale. And our goal is here in the next month is to enlarge it to seven foot, make the mold for the foundry, so that we could continue on with the project to be on schedule for next year.
Yes, it's an interesting process. The miniature is really the basis for the final sculpture, and Toby has elected to, as you can see in the photos there, sculpt General Washington at the time the county was founded as a Revolutionary War general in his Revolutionary War generals garb. The sculpture itself, while this miniature is two-foot, it's for illustrative purposes. It's also the basis now. They use technology. Rather than having to re-sculp a seven-foot-high life-size, just larger-than-life-size sculpture, they will scan this miniature maquette in detail, and then using lasers, cut high-density foam in a subtractive manufacturing process that then will create a rough outline of what we see here today. And then the next step after that is for the sculptor to go back to the studio with that foam base that's now full-size and apply the clay and the intricate detail that's in the miniature there, so they will be in the full-size sculpture. Then after that, excuse me if I'm boring anybody, I think it's, I just find the process very interesting. The next step then is to make a latex or rubber mold of that, that then in full-size, that then will be used to take to the foundry. They will then use what's called the lost wax casting process, where they use the rubber mold, fill that with wax, then remove the mold. The wax is there, and then they put a high-temperature sand-type silica coating over that, that then creates a heat-proof mold, that then they melt the wax out. It leaves the interior dimensions, and then they'll pour the molten bronze into that to cast the final statue. So, that's probably the most challenging part, but the exciting part is getting up to that point. And we're excited to share the miniature with you today, and we hope we'll be able to take some photographs with you, because without your help, this wouldn't have happened. We're pleased to have private donations, but we really haven't gone publicly with support for this yet. Our next step, you had committed 25,000 out of last year's room tax money and last year's budget. We'd like to request the next 25 that you had tentatively committed. We hope we can demonstrate it. We're far enough along. Your 25 will enable us to proceed with that enlargement process with the enlargement studio. There aren't many around, but the one that we used will be the same one that did Clara Barton up in Trenton, New Jersey. They turned their old racetrack up there into a sculpture garden, and there's a wonderful enlarging studio there that does repairs to sculptures from all over, as well as doing these enlargements of new ones. And then after that, we'll be able to proceed with the mold-making, the sculpting of the final form, the mold-making, and then be up to the point of actually going to the foundry. The other thing besides requesting the additional 25,000 of room tax money.
Well, in order, President Barr.
Mr. Porter? We're gonna do this again, Mr. Porter? Mr. Porter, I'm asking you a question. You need to leave, sir. If not, I'm gonna take a recess and clear the room till we have order. Unfortunately, we do it again.
And as we kind of think about the bicentennial, here in this county, there were several projects that bicentennial committees put together. One of them was the repair of Fort Frederick and the building of the two barracks, and there were other projects that we did in this county. Well, this one is going to be like that, an everlasting, you know, project for the 250th, and it'll be there long after you and I are gone.
And the fireworks or laser show is over.
All of that celebration of the 250th, you know, this statue will live on forever. All right, sorry. I know you're about to reconvene, sir.
Okay. We are back in session. Please proceed with the George Washington presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the explanation of how this sculpture that'll live way longer than all of us are going to be around, and celebrating in a way the 250th of both this county and the state of Maryland and, of course, the United States. It is a great project to honor our first president and our county's namesake. I also want to thank the county commissioners. Last September, you recall, you signed the resolution which set forward two different fiscal year contributions of 25 in fiscal year '25, and then another 25,000 in fiscal year '26. I want to thank you for that, for that commitment. It was two payments in the commitment letter that I'm referring to that was in the agenda for today. And what we'd like to do, sir, is to have a picture of the county commissioners accepting this project around the maquette, the statue, so that we can move forward.
Mike, one question.
Yes, sir.
Do you want us to go ahead? Do we need to vote for the second commitment? If we do, I make a motion to fulfill our commitment of the second 25,000 to this project.
That'd be terrific. Thank you.
And that comes from hotel motel tax.
Correct.
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor by saying aye. Opposed? Same sign, 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That will enable us to continue beyond this miniature phase, as I was saying, to the next phase, which will be the enlargement and then the moldcasting. And with this miniature now, we're able to go public and share what this will look like, and we'd love to have a picture of all of you together with the us and the artist and the maquette. We brought in a little pedestal, and we'll be able to hopefully get some publicity of all of us and encourage other public support. The other thing we'd like you to do as you prepare for the upcoming legislative session is we'd love to have your support with the community coalition of having this be one of your agenda items for hopefully some state bond bill money, which I know will be in short supply.
Are we gonna hold this stuff?
Oh, you're not gonna hold this stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see everybody.
I'm with you.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Oh, everybody, yeah. Here we go. Everybody squeeze in.
All right.
Happy birthday.
Please, as much as possible, please.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. There, I'm hoping for Tim. There we go. Perfect. Ready? Everyone look here. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Toby's, you know, just such a beautiful and talented artist. We're so fortunate. And thank you.
John.
John, thank you for.
And the first battle was occurring in Boston at the time.
Thanks, Tom, for coming.
Well, absolutely.
I was just reading an historic account of a militia that was western, what they see, we're talking about Virginia, but now West Virginia, coming up through Old Town and talking about going to Boston to help support the militia in that battle. What is so interesting is that, you know, a little perspective, which is, you know, people don't understand the significance of this man and what people did in the revolution. We weren't even a country in 1776 when independence was declared. We were colonies and armed rebellion against the British Crown. We had an army sent here from the largest entity in the world to put it down, and this man and others persevered five years more after our county was founded and the Declaration of Independence was done in 1776, until they won victory in Yorktown in 1881. And finally, it took another two years to get a peace treaty, but that's how our country was founded. And these people really put their lives on the stake. And I think we should be very honored that we were the first county in what was then colonies, now the United States, to be part of this grand experience.
Al. Mr. Porter?
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask again, Mr. Porter. You have a no-trust pass order?
Risa.
I'm gonna ask you to leave one more time. Recession, clear. Okay, we're back online. Good morning again. Next item is under tab 10, Heat Stress Policy 2025.
Good morning. Chip Rose, Director of Human Resources.
Brian Evercash, Training and Safety Coordinator.
Staff is seeking a motion to adopt an official policy to address the risks that are associated with heat stress. Earlier this year, the Maryland Department of OSHA asked all state and county agencies to formalize our plans to address the risks associated with heat stress. The policy applies to all employees who may be exposed to extreme heat conditions while performing work-related duties, including outdoor and indoor environments where the heat exposure essentially temp's over 88 degrees would occur. You have the policy in front of you. We reviewed it earlier, but Brian is here as the author of the policy to answer any questions that you might have.
I assume this meets state guidelines requirements?
No.
Motion for.
Motion approved, if that's what you're looking for.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, a second, for acceptance as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, 4-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item under tab 11 is Smithsburg Wastewater Treatment Plant Energy Consumption Incentive.
Good morning. Joe Moss, Deputy Director for Engineering Services, Department of Water Quality. I'm here today to present a agreement between Potomac Edison and the county commissioners. It's a program that Potomac Edison has where they incentivize customers to install more efficient equipment with their upgrades. Now, we are doing a very large upgrade at Smithsburg right now, and they looked at all of the specifications for all the improvements that we're doing. And as you can tell from the letter, they estimate our savings after the upgrade goes online to be approximately $25,000 a year. Now, that will have to be verified after we go online to see what our before and after, you know, energy consumption is. It could go up. It could be less, but that's.
Joe, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a recommendation that I administratively move the remainder of the agenda items in open session to the next regular meeting.
Okay.
Our next available meeting.
So moves.
Okay.
So, with that, I need a motion to go into closed session. So, with that, I need a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated.
Should we go to closed session?
All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, 4-0. Thank you.